That's the best.
We're now live on YouTube.
Actually means it's on the side. Okay, well, welcome to this meeting. 13th February. For those who haven't bought a Valentine's card for your beloved, you've still got tonight to go up and purchase one, I hope you will. Um, I always thought Valentine was a very important day in my life, so it was my wedding anniversary.
Yeah. And that was something you didn't forget.
Now, now.
Nice one, Lisa.
No, no, you know how good I am at finding affairs and doing the right thing. No, that our little secret cell, you never know about me the most. Anyway, thank you very much. On the general apologies, I'm going to give Fran Davis apologies. Going to be here unfortunately.
I'm expecting a phone call which may come during this meeting. And I have, can I give my apologies for stepping outside for a few minutes?
That's fine, I do it in planning a lot.
You don't, yeah, you don't have to say anything, just get up and leave.
I had no idea whether that was violated. Good chair in a meeting, that might be a little bit appropriate.
It'll be fine.
Yeah, okay, I know in future reference.
We've just let Howard speak. Well, declarations of interest, I don't believe any prejudicial interests. Everyone's declared them in the council's declaration. And that has changed, it was time you to take me up anyway. Minutes of the last meeting, are you committing happiness minutes? Which case we will agree those minutes and we'll have verdict on that then. Actually, now they've agreed, that's fine, we're happy with that then. Action disc, item four. We can actually go back to the action. We're going to do that. Actually, gender item four here.
Actually.
Anyway, put up your act on this. Have a look on there, all of them are on the agenda. If anything you want to have a take on, we'll agree to ask. Did you look at that? It often becomes easy to get to make more friends. Won't be guilty of that one, so. Ryan.
Just one thing. The youth council, when are we expecting the Buckinghamshire Council's response to certain part of that?
I think it's been on the same things.
So they're doing their consultation at the moment and they've gone into both of the schools now, I believe. So they're doing that next day of work now, so I would expect it to happen soon, actually.
Fantastic. And you're ready, what we do out of that, if the committee wants to be notified, what it wants to do is, we can think about it in advance of discussing it.
Yeah.
You know, and there might be something we want to do before we come to committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Anything else on there? Back to that, Ryan. I take it that we're happy with the action this then?
Does anyone want to ask that take part?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We have got that on the action. If you look in your paperwork, they unfortunately apologize, it's a very small print page. Remember, the committee asked for a report on the safety escape park after, I did Lisa letting on that in the sense that we were concerned of the condition of escape park after we did an event and I do believe that we agreed that we'd get it and then that's what it is, it's sort of where it is. If I was to say anything, I think they're doing another one in March, am I correct?
Yes, yeah. They let me know that this is the report from November. They had done some repair work with an external contractor in September, so this November report, if you see the priority column on the left-hand side as all those, that's because it doesn't need any further work at the moment, but they're going to do it then in March. There isn't an announcement date on the new skate park yet, but they were quite positive that it was going to be soon. So hopefully there will be an official date for that. I think we should look at that again in March.
Next month.
There was overturning made in the cabinet member report, it would be crescent in March. So I think that we didn't know which March. We knew it was March, the eyes of March, the same, it was the eyes of March.
The March, Julius Caesar.
Julius Caesar, yes, so hopefully we'll have Julius Caesar moment when we press. Just the committee think that we'll leave it and write him, ask him for another date so that we have both the action update and the committee update from the cabinet member on next meeting. So that we cover both of these, it could be that one to proceed the other. In which case, you know. We run events there, we need to plan. I'm counting on releasing them.
Thanks. I would think that if they're going to be having it down and starting fresh, that they wouldn't spend too much money on repairs because that will then feed into what money's left for a new skate park, so I would hope that they would take that into consideration, that if they were going to start on a new skate park in March, that we were hoping is this year. That, you know, they wouldn't do too much repair work so that they could just get on with a new skate park.
I do believe that historically, and it is very much historically, isn't it? But we asked to have this put into section 106 back in the days of the district council before its last session of the district council, I think, so we have got teeth in this game. I think it might be worth just making sure that we refresh that at the next meeting with all this information, the the audit, the letter from the cabinet member stroking officer, the section 106, and I think if I was to ask them, my worry with this project is when we read section 106 nearly a decade ago, that what that many would buy a decade ago, maybe someone completed to what you purchase is now, which is a concern to me that that they would have to find some other monies to make the difference. We know how for our own projects in town council, I won't go into them, we know how much inflation. And you probably knows better than most how much inflation is impending on a third committee expenditure, so I think that perhaps that would be a good question with your agreement to ask within the letter.
Yeah.
And you think that's sensible? Do I propose that?
Yeah, I'll circle it up.
Everybody good about that?
Just clarify which cabinet member?
Um, councillor Clive Harris.
House of Commons.
And it will get a response from the office. Thank you very much. He also knows is on point one on the action list that there's a letter of ill repute or or a letter from BBC explaining their position on the the fact that I love the radio or this is. I don't know anyone after me who's probably a little sad, follows these things. I did watch the committee inquiry where actually he was questioned, the the chairman of the BBC was questioned quite strongly by the quop party committee about taking away local news and did he feel that that was what he should be doing? And so I'm encouraged that parliamentarians probably have the same concerns that we do, and that's across party committee, that local news being removed was something they didn't think was sensible. Of course, there's no telling how that will go, but I don't think there's anything less members believe we can go back on this apart from, ready, there are joint disappointment within the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it's worth going back again.
No, just facing officers' time, isn't it?
Yeah. So would you agree that we're just ready to our disappointment?
Yeah.
Is that agreeing?
Yeah.
Say yes.
Yeah.
Then that's that. And then if anybody comes back a minute to the fact that we're disappointed, not that it's going to make any difference at all, but if anybody questioned what we did and why we did, we've got a record of it, which is good. Which case I'll bring you on to market reviews, which is item five. You'll see that in your agenda that there is a report about pitches and whatever, a little minute to look at that because there's a proposal in 1.2 and 1.3 around what we're pushing back, just for information, having increased the market picture. Probably getting on, Andy might know, but well, I do, probably near a decade, near a decade, really, very recently, yeah. Put them up and then we didn't put them up during Covid and then unfortunately our cost has gone up, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I recommend, I propose that we follow the recommendations.
I'll second that.
Is that agreed?
Seems very sensible.
No, we'll agree, we'll have a vote on that.
Thanks.
That was amazing. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for pulling that forward. Right, which brings us to the other item, which is on the agenda, which is the proposal to the planters with your commitment, I'm going to allow. I think we've got councillor Mordu and Ryan and allow him coming to the meeting to speak on this, but only to speak on it because the vote is not going to be within the members. I do believe we've, the office has got additional statements today around this, which is more on the agenda, I'll ask them the office to read that out, if that's okay before we discuss it.
And, okay, so this has been provided by Alice Billings from the community board. Please see the below wording, which provides further context to the town centre committee regarding the long-term financial agreement for the Villiers Hotel plus the planters part year one. The funding from the Buckingham and Villages Community Board will cover the cost of the plant for higher charities for one year. Buckingham Town Council will order the additional planters as part of their wider town centre order and the Buckingham and Villages Community Board will reimburse them directly. Following year one, if the Villiers Hotel wish to continue to have the plant in place, they will liaise with Buckinghamshire Council regarding permissions. They will liaise with the town centre committee to agree whether the Villiers will source their own planters or if they want to continue the agreement of Buckingham Town Council ordering the planters, which will be financially reimbursed by the Villiers Hotel directly. And to be clear, this has been agreed by all parties and Howard and Steve. Howard Mordu as a community board chair and Bruce Cave, chief executive officer for Villiers Hotel is also included in that. And just to add from my notes, the, when they talk about the Villiers Hotel planters, they mean the area in front of the company.
Yeah, which you're all aware of, the long discussion of it, and you know, I touched on this today, which then we but we hadn't had this response there with the budget issue. Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much. I mean, this is something we've anticipated for some while. As the main point being to stop people from trying to stop people parking there. It refers to static and movable, I presume that sometimes they need to be moved to enable like a wedding party or something like that. But it's which I get. I think the, and I like, I think it's a very, it's certainly worth trying this because it is a nuisance, the parking there. But after a year, if for whatever reason, the planters aren't replaced, then we're back to square one, aren't we? But I suppose it's an experiment.
What we saw reassurance today. There was a discussion today and I mean, councillor Mordu, I think he may come in and add difference to that, but we just thought reassured because there was some question, which you would all ask around the longevity of finances and the responsibilities around this and of course it is for one year and that ought to be clear. And the Villiers very much would, according to Buckinghamshire Council take on, they had not really, nobody from our staff and team will be involved in moving them or watering them, I understand, so that was fine. I'm just going to, I'll take Lisa and then Howard sat there waiting patiently, so.
I don't mind if you all check out, but.
Is he wanting to come in?
I didn't say anything.
He didn't, in which case we'll carry on then. Okay, he wasn't waiting to come into the meeting earlier, but.
He is like, he's not.
He's not waiting, he's very careful. We're glad we don't need to do anything.
Yeah, my concern is that there's nothing in writing from Villiers to say they'll take this on. And it's a lot of money, that if they don't, and then we end up being burdened with it.
That's a very good question, and I know that the chair resources, that'd be one of the things that you'd ask me. That's why I saw clarity with offices today to get the fact that the only part that we're doing with it is facilitating the purchases to obviously for this year. Any agreement thereafter, that would be between the officers of the town council and this committee, when we carry on that order. And it'd be very much for Villiers to maintain this thereafter because it's not something that I anticipate as precepting for. I think that would be the central word, but and of course, we've got twelve months to talk to Villiers about the next twelve months following, the contract. And Buckinghamshire Council have got twelve months to talk about where they are. I believe this is coming out of what they call bounce back money, which is money to get the con coming. And if we don't, if they don't spend it in this financial year, it will get called back in the main.
I'm happy for it to be spent, I just don't want it to be burdened.
No, no, we're all on the same page there. I bet Andy was first, then I take, so.
My biggest fear is that Dominic beats all, or somebody else will try and move these planters. So they need to be reasonably heavy, so one person or two people can't just move it physically unless you get a little trolley champ sort of thing to move them like we do, so because they would try anything, the dominance pieces to try and park, fart there.
I think the fact that the council's involved that, because I'll take it soon, then I'll come back and I'll see how it works.
Well, first of all, sorry, in my ignorance, a question, who puts that piece of land actually on, that is my way, isn't it? And I, I think it's a great idea to try to stop people parking there, particularly when people are reversing off it, blooming day.
Yeah.
Um, but would a small notice additionally be helpful?
I think that's something that presumably, I had a I'm not saying names, I did the office, so I think that when this comes to be implemented and we're ordering the plants, I think those sorts of suggestions will get took into the ground and we ought to be very clear about our purpose in this and very clear about what we're doing, and yeah.
Yeah, so I was going to ask a question about any follow-up costs that might come our way, but it seems to me that this question has been answered and the answer is none. And next year is a different country and we'll talk about that then, but it won't automatically come to us for next year. So I think I'm happy to be reassured on that. Another question that has occurred to me, what happened, who is liable if these things get damaged?
My understanding is that they're not, they would be Buckinghamshire Council. It's a Buckinghamshire Council request, all we're doing is facilitating as a subcontracting to order them as a goodwill gesture and our partnership in getting them doing. I would believe that would come under there, but we haven't actually ordered them yet and until you've cleared tonight, none of that can actually be discussed. Lisa.
Just say Buckinghamshire Council have responsibility for the land, so they're still maintaining their responsibility, so I'd imagine that they will.
Okay.
So with that, if everybody who spoke on this, spoke on it, who wants to talk on it, if there's anything additional that we need to consider. I think we've had a good discussion from Chair of Environment and the Chair of Resources about the liabilityism and there about the practicalities and and everybody else in this side about how it's been working and Andy pointed out the the, the cultural issue on that area of land, which we were aware of, this is hoping to prevent that, so. So are we happy, can I have a pose?
I'm happy to propose it, and they'll accept this.
I agree.
Yeah.
Soon, we'll vote for that, is that the answer, we think. And I believe that we'll do a press release about the fact that we're insisting them in this.
Yeah, sure.
Are you happy with that?
Yeah.
And we can do that at appropriate time or whatever. We won't be immediately, I don't expect that we will do a press release about ours, but if we are, so in council offices, finding resorts in order, I think we the body of the council should get some, a few dots out of them supporting that. Okay, we'll move on to item picked, which is the seven, I mean, which is the values. They are what they are. Is there any significant questions around them, noting that we've, we've ended the about budgets recently and we can read our recent plan. And we are where we are, those committee budgets, I understand that what we've agreed when we go through preset plus the current expenditure. The budgets we've got for this year, there are budgets you will note until the 13th of March, so. Annie.
Since we have talked about this extensively, I propose that we go to the vote to note these.
Yeah, if that agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for that, leaving it more strictly. Item eight, which is slightly more forward-thinking thing and I'll hand over. Who's leading on these sculptures? Are you leading on it, Amanda Orley? Who leads the month's doctors, just talk members with a report and a bit of lead around it, is that okay?
And this is very much led by Sam, our town centre and external facilities manager, I can answer any questions.
I think, just to, you'll remember, if you remember, that we didn't do it last year because of the practicality, it's the bringing forward it, whatever, and it's going to come forward this coming year. And it's going to be part of the feature through the summer and it's part in its partnership with the community board funding, so we have to honour that and anything we say, that's it.
So we'll know the report, shall we?
And we're going to know that report and agree, we'll do a press release at the appropriate time.
Yeah.
Can I agree all hands, you know them? All right, thank you very much for that. Item nine is a little bit more difficult. We've learned mid-May, Dave, which I don't know if Madam Mayor knows about it yet or not, but she might well do, and I'm.
Well, I assume, but I've got to my reading, but yes, I can kind of, I mean.
Yeah, I assume that you should know about this because primarily you're our mayor, and it would involve you. Apparently, I'm advised that the left tenancy has decided not to have a to do the civic service in Buckingham this, at the moment. What I'm not aware of is are they planning to do a civic service in the future? Or apparently, I'm advised that it was to do with people getting to Buckingham and it being a busy weekend. But it would have been a busy weekend wherever the civic service was, I think.
Wow.
So that's quite problematic because the whole business of what we spent, the offices and working around is how we cater for the weekend of the coronations. I don't think we're in any position, left members feel, of a going to say anything, I think we need to go away now and talk within the office about what we can do, because what we were going to do on that day, we couldn't do it, so we could contract directly from that. And now there's going to be in Buckingham on that Sunday, which we need to not just think of them off the top of our head, but actually be considered, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I would have thought that the main possibility would be to have a civic service, but just a town civic service. This was going to be the whole county and the Lord Lieutenant has offered to come to that if we have it and do a reading appropriate.
Well, can I, can I take that as a slightly more positive than I was feeling two hours ago? I wasn't particularly that positive two hours ago. Are you happy that?
So we, with the mayor and resources.
Yeah, Mary is all that, but we will have a conversation outside, whether that then means we don't do any additional, we do. But I don't think at this point in time, nothing on the agenda, I'm minded to commit officers and people to doing anything without a considered time resources through that weekend, so I think we need to allow the offices time to discuss this and note, note the information. Record what Madam Mayor has told us, that there's likely to be a conversation, but of course we need that correspondence and take that to resort. Would that be the way forward and then anything else, people event will bring back to the substantive meeting, which would, if necessary. Madam Mayor.
Yes, the, the only ancillary to that, I hope it's relevant to the agenda.
Yeah.
Is that the Buckingham newsletter will need to be changed to reflect that this alteration.
I think you're well.
Yes, that needs to print on Thursday, so.
But I think that between Madam Mayor, Chair of Resources and yourselves, you can sort that out to make sure that it's and we. Well, you know, it's just that it would be discussed, the resources, the civic.
And, yeah, with, there'll be a lot of conversations.
Well, can we just leave it that we know that it's going to be dealt with and, and we don't need to micromanage that? I would have quite liked to have made everyone drive from South Buckingham to Buckingham, but clearly there's not enough charging points for them all. Or really, they haven't got a map, maybe we should send everyone.
The road isn't good enough.
Maybe we should just send everyone to Buckingham Town map as a complimentary gift.
Items from South Bucks.
I know you're here now.
I, yeah, thank you, Kev. I think the, the impression I get is that the lieutenantcy as a whole in the nation has more or less agreed, they won't do this sort of thing. I think it's a sort of, she's obviously in some kind of group with. And they've, I think what they don't want to do is impinge on local activities because it has been suggested on that Sunday that people have a big lunch or something like that. And I think maybe the feeling was that if people then put on this type of formal civic service for the whole county, that would make it very difficult for the local mayors who then travelled here to participate in local things, which might be more appropriate, but that, that's only my interpretation of what she said.
Well, we'll, we'll interpret it in the way it has happened, it's nothing, it's not our choice.
No, no, indeed.
All we're doing is working through our civic leader, which is you, Madam Mayor, to facilitate this and and Buckingham's door is always open to people to come visit.
Yeah, I think we need to make that.
And before we move on, the recommendation on the report, we could still vote on.
We should, we voted on that recommendation.
And I don't know if anyone had any comments.
You've got any comments on it, it's about the stuff we're going to do ancillary, listen.
I suppose it depends on how much office of time we're then committing, because what we'd previously agreed is that we were going to work with the church. But if we're now going to be supporting voluntary community and social enterprises, how much time is that going to matter to that, that's my need.
No.
I would say that there'll be quite a substantial difference in officer hours required from having the lieutenantcy civic service and running our own civic service. So that is something that we'll have to accommodate. It might be that we didn't do exactly what was proposed in terms of all the extra stuff. And we could leave it and not vote on it at all.
Well, I, I think when we meet again.
More information, don't we?
When we meet again, yeah.
We don't meet again till April, which I would be definitely too late.
Partly late.
Yeah.
I would propose that we agree the recommendation. And if there is a necessity to negate that recommendation, that you'll give the good grace to the chair and vice chair and chair of resources to discuss it thereafter, if necessary. Madam Mayor.
Yeah, can I just propose a minor amendment to the recommendation? But it is recommended that the council focus as appropriate on supporting etc. Because then if it becomes inappropriate because of something else that wasn't foreseen, then it gives us an out, yeah.
That's a very.
Or as far as possible.
As far as possible. I think appropriate and as far as possible, that's how those words, that gives you, I quite like it, appropriate and as far as possible, it's, yeah.
I was just going to ask, when is the resources meeting, whether to find?
I was just going to ask, when is the resources meeting, whether to find if there's going to be civic service or not?
And that's not for a few weeks, but we'd have to go away and have this conversation. Yeah. But anyway, it's afternoon.
We can't really do anything about it.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, sorry to keep shut, truth, um, truth. It may be relevant that I could have, um, um, programmed in a civic service entirely separately from the coronation and I decided that I wouldn't because of the coronation civic service. So I think it's sort of instead of, it could almost be seen instead of that. But it, whereas if I'd actually said I'm going to have a civic service in March or something, and then this, then came up, that would have, so it's a good thing.
You're having your civic service on this day is rather poor, you really, and that's for you to decide and.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to answer Amanda's question, the next resource is, is the sixth of March.
Oh, not too far away then, I was thinking we then got mayor making on this, it's second to June.
Hmm.
Don't worry about that, that's when we get the mayor.
Um.
Are, are we, are we happy to agree the recommend, um, Brian, sorry?
Um, just a quick one, I know it might be a wild idea, but. Um, just would it, uh, would it be, would it be an idea of hiring, well, not hiring, but getting part of personal, well, volunteers, um, to action these things to sort of offset the.
What's going to happen?
I would think of this first, that that's what the idea is, that volunteer groups, um, will be involved in that.
What we're doing is helping collate the information with as little time staff as possible.
For their organisation.
We might be involved in running those organisations.
Oh, no, no.
There's, there's an anticipation that groups like Rotary and, and In a Wheel and some of the other groups in the town.
Round table, probably.
Round table, well done, this, and other people like that would be involved in that. And what we're doing is being good, good, um, good citizens by supporting their actions. I don't think we need to put anything additional in here, if there is something we need to discuss additionally, now that weekend, we've got time and next day we'll, we'll discuss it there, but we'll know more by resources.
Yeah.
On the sixth of March, if that resources, if somebody tells us that something isn't going to happen, then we can discuss from events point of view whether we wish something to happen. But I don't think with the mayor's amendment, which, do you mind if it again?
Either as appropriate or as far as possible, yeah.
Yeah, we have both of those words, and if we go on that.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, all going to pay that. Thank you, I think that, that's a shame, I'm the same, if we get out on that problem as we do, really, knowing all the things that we are. Um, right, which we move on to, um, the next slide, I'll get back to April then, another look. Um, which is play around the parishes. You ought to see the, the costs in the report, I'd like you just to look at the costs you make on it and, um, uh, and decide how we're, um, going to do that, if you've got anything to add on that, Amanda. Around the play around the parishes, you just lot of thought through the thought, it's a public thing too.
Okay, um, as you know, we used to book play around the parishes and, but now, well, we're still calling it play around the parishes, um, through Buckinghamshire Council. Um, they have now brought.
Okay, we've just been corrected, um, this is always a good quality of office. We wrote it on the amendment, but then we didn't, I moved my vote on the office, so I moved swiftly forward. For the next item, we should have then voted on this in the standard item. That all agree that there's, that on this standard amendment, no. Um, I was surprised that you all didn't pick that up.
Thanks for a second, so Margaret again and Lisa again.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll go back, if you imagine that thing didn't take place, it was just like a, didn't take place, but we've done it correctly for the minutes and that's what mattered. And then we go back to Amanda, it was partly, we were driving to this, um, where all of, we could always start again. We could start again, I apologise, Amanda, that's our.
No, that's okay, as you all know, um, we used to book play around the parishes through Buckinghamshire Council. They have now brought everything together so that us and the North of the county and South are all operating the same way. I didn't know that they were doing things different, but apparently they were. Um, so they recommended, um, MK Player Association and Yorkshire Player Association, as, um, potential companies we can go to, um, for like our play around the parishes sessions. Looking at them, um, MK Player Association looks like the best because they can offer us all day sessions, um, whereas the Oxfordshire Player Association can't, they can only do like half day sessions. Um, so what I've done is I've recommended that we go with MK Player Association, that we book three play days, because we used to book three play around the parishes sessions, that we need Chalice Park as a law. Um, they'll all run the same, where it's free for the parents, turn up and play, um, for the adults, well, eleven, twelve year olds. And this report also covers basketball sessions. Um, so they're the turn up and play and they're free, um, for eight to twelve year olds in Chalice Park and, thirteen and above in Bolton Park. Sessions are well, um, well attended, um, once the older ones find out that it's going on and they've had a look at what's going on, who's there, who's not there, they do join in. And so there's been some kids from Buckingham that have gone on to play for Mel Keynes and other, um, town and also a couple have gone on to play for even, um, county, sorry.
County.
Yeah. Um, but we wanted to run an extra two sessions this year. Um, so we just like that agreed as well.
I'd be glad to Madam Mayor and to Lisa.
Thank you, um, just, I'm sorry, I apologise if I've already got this information and I haven't seen it. But how mu, is that an increase in cost from previous years?
It is a little bit, but then I think Buckinghamshire Council are going to put their prices up as well.
Yeah.
Um, what they've done is they had, if you booked it by, I think it was October, November time, then they would give you, the year before's rate, but obviously we haven't heard anything. And then we found out just a few weeks ago that they're not doing it anymore. Um, but it does on the, the sheets, um, about, um, MK Player Association, it does tell you, um, about pricing and how they've done it, um, like they've got a ten percent increase of national minimum wage in April. Um, cost of hire for vans and prison or with fuel and insurance prices, so they explained why their prices have set up what they're set at.
Hmm. Thank you.
Are you happy with that, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've heard of Mel Keynes Players Association and I think they are a good.
Come back.
Yeah.
Um, it's only a hundred and fifty one pound over what we budgeted, so I'm happy to agree recommendations, um, based on the fact that we're getting, what we've had before and we're having more basketball sessions, so. Let's go with the vote of that.
Before we vote on it, a couple of things, the chair, clarity, this isn't a Buckinghamshire Council scheme now, we're going into an alternative scheme, which makes very much difference the way that we announce this.
Yeah.
Secondly, this is, um, a collection of things that we're doing for young people, directly from the town council, not in collaboration with Buckinghamshire Council, which makes a difference in the way we announce this. And lastly, I think it's really important, personally judging by the, all the collection of events that the team put on last year, and this summer, I don't know if anyone got a chance to see it, how well supported these events are, and how many young mums and children gather at these events. And let's face it, those of us who would be fortunate enough to have children, you're really searching for something to do with the economic climate.
Something that's free.
Something that's free.
Yeah.
I think it's, um, it's more important than ever, um, when people perhaps may not be able to afford holiday because of the fuel.
Yeah.
Well, they may not be able to go away, we don't know what circuits start deciding, it doesn't identify anyone across income scales, so it's people, so. I'm looking for a pro and a sender, that, that, that's, you got that, um, now all vote on that and. Okay, and then we agree we'll do a press release at appropriate time around it, but I think we do need to include the word, it's the town council funding this, it's the town council doing that and it's the reason why we're doing it. And that is, you know, like the art events we do, it's just been so important.
It's good opportunities to have a refresh of the ground building.
Yeah, it's, we will allow, it's something that we'll do through, um, our promotions in, in the next, probably will be, or project will be in the next letter, won't it, that we do, um.
So the next one will be the, um, summer fringe.
It'll be in that.
And it'll be in that.
So we can put you into that as well.
Well, the Buckingham Council are being mean, and not wanting the children of Buckingham to play.
Well, I, I, I think, I think you've got to say, this was a very much district centric.
We're always paid for anyway, so.
Um, we all paid for it, what they did was facilitate it, put their badge on it.
They booked it.
Yeah. Booked it and then had a sticker out, basically.
We're always paid for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just as a last comment, really, we, we can't then call it play around the parishes, come on, which is probably what you've been saying. Because that implies it's going, because, you know, because they used to have something in mates more, and they may well, but it won't be play around the parishes.
I think, I'd be happy that we'll call it by a Buckingham-centric name, which is play around Buckinghamshire. Um, or Buckingham, we'll let the office come up, let's not try and do it by now, I'm sure the office can come up with a very impressive name.
Like committing.
Yeah, let's not do it by committing, because it would, it would just end with, um, um, semi colons and not that, what we.
Yeah, all right, would you want to make a proposal?
Yeah, I'm hoping we rename it appropriately and we'll leave the offices to give us the recommendation of what it is in time to go into the press release and into the next magazine. That agree?
Yeah.
And taking that as a money.
And taking it down.
And secondly, I've all drew a vote, uh, it's great, it's like we're in a union meeting and it all just. Around the, um, just.
You're very good in February, it's not like December.
Um, yeah. Um, okay. We get on to item, um, eleven, the fringe, well, you've got that in your gender where we are a bit, um, there are other things that might drift in and out here, but are you happy with the skeleton of, um, the fact that we're probably depending on the March comedy night, probably do another comedy night, depending on how March comedy night goes, uh, which is going to be absolute success. Lisa's going to tell it to everybody in Buckingham, uh, because Lisa loves comedy nights. Uh, 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 we're going to tell it to everybody, you know, she's going to get all her friends there and it's going to absolutely summer. And, 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 um, and then that though might be additional in it. Um, but are you happy to know the report, because we can discuss it again in April, if there's any additions? Um, and trust that we are working in, there are things might drift in and out of it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's agreed, all good to know, if anyone did go hands, if you know the report. And then, um, forthcoming events. Um, for another day on representative outside bodies, I'm not going to say anything tonight. Um, um, I think I'm talking enough for tonight, um, without saying any additional, um, but, um, if anybody else has an outside body that I'm, um, it makes it relevant, um, to, again, to clues to that. Okay, in this case, we can move swiftly on to item thirteen, which is forthcoming events seventeen February, which is the pancake, um, extravaganza at the, um, church where all good people have a chance to fall over, um, for a pancake and enjoy themselves in the epic company of Madam Mayor, Amanda.
Um, pancake base, I just need two extra people to help us out. I've got Andy and good old Terry Bluefield, um, being, um, as, I won't say judges, but people, you know, holding the ribbon, but I need two at the start end as well. So if anybody's free between eleven and twelve on Friday, could you let me know, please? councillor Try is going to act as the M C, as he did last year. We've got, um, pop up arts in the market, um, put the podium out and the, the big deck chair. And also need some people to enter the adult race, Ryan.
Now, well, I've spoken, I've spoken about this to my lovely boss, uh, well, my deputy manager has said, yes, uh, you've, uh, this is, this is overtime, well, so absolutely you can join that race. Uh, I will be definitely in my race.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's my, well, one scuford and striving body, I hopeful, hopefully I can.
You're still very useful, if you put us by interest in life compared to all of the beer, um, and, and. You know, um, so are we happy with that? Only one thing, uh, I, I did hear and I'm going to say it, um, you realise I'm having the, um, bar bus. Um, which you both, wait, you're not saying, you're going to claim, and I have not forgotten, Ashley Wade, you know, Ashley, the, the bar bus, who's been running, is going to relaunch it at the race. I understand Ashley, who I spoke to about this on numerous occasions, um, and he's special officers and we've got an agreement. And I think for Amanda, he, correct, he's about five feet where he's going to park it.
Yes.
And, and basically there's a little car, which is coming as well, which people can rent if they've got a disabled relative and they can just, we will go, we would go into the car and take them shopping and take them to the event, so. And he's also likely to, if Ashley can manage it, bring some people to the event, which is not our, responsibility, but he may bring some people from some of the, um, residential homes in Buckingham to the event to allow them to pay his part in it, which will be rather nice, I think that our bit is we're allowing him to promote it in the event. And I also did get a agreement from Ashley, which he was not aware, I think it was an unfair, to be fair to Ashley, it was an unfair agreement. I said to him that I will race in the pancake race that you do, but I think actually we shouldn't, we shouldn't actually hold Ashley to that. But I don't think I was being completely open and straightforward with the information which was available to me. And, and so if Ashley wants to take part in the race, we'll encourage him to do so, but I'm not going to hold him to that. Because I think that was a very unfair, um, suggestion to him, and he is a very much a very, a very sweet gentleman, Ashley.
I did mention it to him and he came back and said no.
Well, I, I.
Certainly, we may change this one.
You may change your mind, you know, um, are we happy with that, Amanda?
Yeah, I'm happy with that, I was just going to query something else about the pancake race, so, do we have a town crier?
No, yes.
And, no, because there was a suggestion that.
There was a suggestion that we would do the auditions for the new town crier at the pancake race.
Not suitable.
But in the end, we decided it wasn't suitable, so we're going to do that now at the food fair.
Oh, all right.
But it's got a stage.
Well, no, we're going to do it outside.
You're going to do it outside.
But it's a good location outside, because we do have to use there.
Um, yeah, we're going to do it there because, well, I think we've got Martin in it, and, um, and I shouldn't be, we, um, Martin will, probably greet everybody, um, whatever, we can get him to do that, it is unfortunate, but we can't do the town crime, to be clear. Is it happy to know that, um, Andy?
But we'll, has anybody a person to do it with, wrestle to see if he'll do the pancake race, just.
What, enter the pancake race?
No, 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 they do the town private.
No, he's not, he's not available, he's, he's handed it in, he's handed in his gown.
I think, oh, okay.
We try.
Have we had a food fair which will be on March the eleventh, we'll decide who the new town crier is. It can be quite fun for people to come and, and, um, and vocalise their abilities to be our new town crier and, um, we'll sort that out, we've got to the eleventh of March. So we're happy to know that, thank Amanda for a minute, thanks to Amanda for putting that together. And, um, I much appreciate it, it always seems like a dry run, if it is start of the fence, we can put the year, and it was better.
Yeah.
Um, and then we, we go on to item eleven.
Well, then they could have some comedy.
Oh, yeah, well, we could do that, uh, that's, I haven't moved it to my point, I've got to do it today, yeah.
Oh, probably, oh, okay.
So I can't do it properly, I've got another duty.
But you're maybe not acting.
No, no, I would not, I would not, I, you know, I, I, I was very conscious on my gender. I know that my brain probably goes in different directions, but I was very conscious on my.
I know, you called it nicer than that again, but.
And that, I said.
You might do that.
I didn't, I said, I said on the eleventh, it's a food fair.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Is that the one I said?
Seven by item eleven.
No, I mean, I'm sorry of my, I'm sorry, and I can assure you, I meant on the food fair on March eleventh. And that's what I mentioned here, it may not be what I'm out there, uh, but. Lucy's. Anyway, food fair, um which is the next item, Amanda.
Okay, Bethany is the lead officer on the big fair this year. Um she's got, I think it's twenty-one stalls inside and we've got four outside. So we, I think we can fit another three or four inside and then we completely fill. Uh there's a lot of different traders that we've not had in, had in the past, um but they're all within a thirty mile radius of Buckingham.
Looking really good.
Yeah.
Andy.
Oh, thank you. Uh the outside traders, I guess they're bringing their own generators.
They will be self-sufficient.
Overload the system.
I think that things being equal, that's it.
I think the W I G refreshments.
And um obviously, we were saying earlier, the town private, you know, um um doing the um competition before find a safe space. Then my run out for her. Well done, well done. Thank you.
We do have two outfits, there is a.
There is a female and a male outfit. Before, we used to have a female town crier many years ago, Andy. Um um Ebon.
Oh, yes.
Used to be the female town crier, and we had to get an outfit made for Ebon, because clearly some American prior outfit was quite. Over the portion for her and um and touched the ground. So um so I couldn't, there was that. So anyway, with that, can we mean it? Our thanks. Um officers for putting that together, and of course, um we'll do uh press release. I think we agreed in early meeting that um we'd do that with um Councilman David to do that. Um Andy.
Just maybe going back a bit, have we sent a nice thank you note to Russell for all the excellent. Work he's done as town crier?
I think we may have an opportunity at our informal meeting to discuss something of that nature.
Okay, so we'll leave that with Madam there. Okay, um she's got that handled and under control. All right, okay, with all best things with comedy in the air tonight, we'll move on to comedy night. Um noting, noting that report, agreed to know that before, and uh. See it so that they can mean, um and and then we're going to comedy night, which is really good news, Amanda.
Right, I'm excited now. Comedy night is on the twenty fifth of March at Tannen Mill. We haven't used that venue before, so it's. Going to be a new experience for us. Um. I've got an email today letting us know who the comedians are. We have apologies from Angela Barnes, because she can't make it this year. Um so just that no apologies, but Glenn Moore will be our headliner. He um apparently is a regular face on T V, having appeared on Mock the Week, Rob Delaney's Stand Up Central. And Stand Up Sketch Show. He's also appeared on News Quiz, on BBC Radio Four, the now show BBC Radio Four. House of Games and Pointless Celebrities. Um so he's going to be our headliner. The M C will be Andrew Bird, who's been here before. I think you might remember him.
George Chap, and if he's the one I'm thinking of, who also does comedy sometimes. Um, yeah, I remember him.
Yes, quite, I can't remember who he was here with, but he's not going to make that. Um he's performed all around the world, has been tour support for Rod Gilbert. Rob Brydon and on his recent arena tour, Michael McIntyre, including Wembley and the O Two. Um he's one of only seven comedians performed for Banksy at Dismal Land. And he's written T V shows, John Richardson.
Banksy's taken Disneyland.
He's written on T V shows, um John Richardson's Ultimate Warrior, eight out of ten cats, does Countdown and Liam Hacks. Don Quaxton Echo is a regular guest on BBC Radio's The Rod Gilbert Show. And they're just looking for a support act, but we should know that um in the next few days. So we're going to get tickets on sale this week. Um, did we say thirteen pounds?
Was any promise to that in that?
Thank you, take the tickets on the door. I just need one um extra person to help you. So if anybody's available, that's Saturday night. Um we'd need you from about half six.
I wouldn't be a good support act.
Sure, it's not coming.
Um but yeah, anyone willing to do, I'm going to be there anyway, but um.
And Louise will be there with me.
Um it's always a good opportunity to meet the public and talk to them about the event and. And saying why you're there, and it also having two people on the table gives League a chance to. Um to be honest, and and it needs to.
Well, no, sometimes we sell any like remaining tickets, but we give tickets that were reserved, so to have two of us there, so that you're not then.
I mean, I will be at that then, but I don't want to take your shit. Oh, no, it's just no point, you may not talk to women who comes in and older.
I would be there to meet with comedians and standing in the right direction. Um so we'll decide on doing that. But we found, I've not, we haven't had Glenn Moore here before, so we don't know what he's like, but they've always been very well. Behaved and they're friendly. Um they will at the end of the night, you know, mixed with the audience. I'm sorry, they are approachable.
Yeah, they're not too cautious, are they?
No.
Okay, we will work on the attendees on it, but I think, I think we must have extra special thank you. To Amanda and the officers who have been working on this, because if you remember the story where we got to where we are, it's been quite a difficult journey. On a finer venue and and so many times during this journey, we feel quite easy, we found nowhere. So I think it's been an extra special effort, and of course, if this is successful, it will then be part of the fringe, Madam there.
Thank you. Just having had a quick Glenn Moore's profile, I do recognise him.
Yeah.
I did, I vaguely remembered the name, but seeing his picture, but he's relatively young as well, and as he's at the university, that might be beneficial to you.
University, but they'll also advertise it to the students.
Yeah, so I think that's.
We're interested to see if students do come. We always send, every year we send them a poster and in the nature.
They couldn't have to travel any shorter distance.
No.
But no, um so anyway, can we please uh read the report first day? Those who agree the report, the Amanda agrees.
Oh, sorry, hang on, no, 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 apology. I didn't need one. I keep going.
Okay, well, I didn't think we needed one, but I would, you want to have a legal officer line just check. In which case, can we mean it in the minutes? Our thanks to Amanda. For um all the effort that she's put into this to make sure this comes out, but you can't thank her enough. It's been a struggle, and I know that um this will be an important calendar date for um Lisa. Um she's probably been to every, every comedy night we've ever had. I know you laugh really very loud, also. Also, Lisa doesn't have a collection of comedy videos, which are going to be freely available, featuring Earth's wine own. Which is, which are not going to be going on the bank, but anyway, um so that's brilliant news. Um and I look forward to it, it's been a pleasure. Thank you. Item fourteen, events review, they're in the agenda. Um Amanda, do you want to lead us through those?
Okay, the Christmas parade, um it's recommended that Buckingham Town Council continues to support the Christmas parade. As it's an event that's enjoyed by residents, businesses alike, that call this the town council's family.
Can I just put an amendment to that?
Yeah.
In the sense that for the auditor, which you need to have a breakdown of the cost.
Yeah, we we have asked, but we didn't ask in time for this gender, so it was about the next gender, what we get back.
I mean, we can't be deemed to give large chunks of money to another organisation without a breakdown of where it actually spent. Um because the audit will ask the question, well, where did you spend that money? And we'll say, don't know. Um and as I sit on to all these committees, when Buckinghamshire County, when I'm a fire bar, it's just a thought section, they're going to ask you. And 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 if it's uncomfortable for the rate, it shouldn't be, because they're.
They've given that, it's just not been ready for this agenda, yeah.
Let's hope so, so we'll get that. Um and um just a minute, our thanks to all the officers involved in it. Next event, Amanda.
The community fair, as you all know, that's held on the same day as the Christmas parade. Um we go from parades to community fair. Um but we're recommending that the council continues organising the community fair as it provides a platform. Which local societies, charities and groups are able to fundraise.
I know you're saying that that's not a breakdown, but.
No, no, it's on there.
It is not a breakdown.
So the request is for the breakdown of what the Christmas parade committee spent their.
They did not have not a breakdown, that's the budget. Okay, I wouldn't, I wasn't not reading the agenda there at all. But seriously, you know, there's not a breakdown of the money that's taken from organisations, you need that.
Yeah, so that that's what we've asked for, and it will go.
And I don't know that consistently in the office, we're not getting that done. Um so I did know what I was saying.
Yeah.
Thank you. I I love the way you say, yeah.
Some of the amount that's supported to the race.
Yeah, thank you very much. Anything I'm going to say wrong, I'd have never.
Anyway, it's recommended that um we continue to organise the community fair as it provides a platform. Which local societies, charities and groups are able to fundraise. For some of them, that is one of their, their main events of the year for fundraising. Um but it's also recommended that the community fair continues to be run on the same day as the Christmas parade. And it attracts not only residents but members of the public from the surrounding area who have come into town to see the parade. The football for the community fair is always very good. It may have, you know, just. And a half hour here, half hour there, where it's less people, but whenever we go in there after the parade, it's always packed.
I mean, also, we must mean it in the minutes, our thanks to um Terry Bloomfield. Um because even though he isn't a town councillor, Terry Bloomfield gave a lot of support to that then. And 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 helped facilitate it and and help coordinate it, and that can't be said enough, he's not a councillor anymore. And to have that level of commitment, we need to mean it, our thanks to him in the minutes. Um Lisa.
Thank you. Um. One of the comments said about, um when do you think the quietest part of the day was for you? And it's immediately quiet till the parade. And that was a comment that um my aunt made, because you can't enter the car park because of road closure. So the, the, the community fair's on and you've got a load of people in the town. You've got some people that can't get in to town to park, so they're obviously not going to it. Um and the um fair closes quite early, considering when the car parks then reopened to let people in. There's not, but thus not down to our organisation, because we don't organise it. They're just a comment of us.
I think, can we just take it that, can we mean it, Lisa's confirmed, then bring it back? And near the time, because I've been thinking, you read it one, but the fact that the parade has to turn and the fact that when it has to turn.
Definitely, that's not the issue, it's people not being able to get in, and then they can't then go to the fair.
Because of the road.
Because of road closure.
Yeah, well, let's take that away.
And it closes quite early.
Madam there.
Yeah, thank you for that. And it's sort of related to that. Um because having been a stall, stall holder at the Christmas fair for many years. I know people have, members of the public have come in and a lot of stall holders have packed up.
Yeah.
Quite significantly earlier than the scheduled finish time, and I know I wasn't a stall, stall holder this last one. But I was there, I think, virtually all the time. And somebody came in quite late, a member of the public, and made that same sort of comment, well, you know, it's packed up.
I'd heard about that as well, and I think.
You did look into that, didn't you? Um and. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you came back with the answer that often that was because of the type of activities that the stalls offer. So if you're doing a. A raffle's not a good example, um a tombolet thing, and then you give away.
Yeah, because I was there at Torsey End and they were packed up.
Because something that was suggested to me, and it was too late to go on this, I think. Was that we do what Terry does with the craft fairs. And when you send out the booking forms and that, you'd say to the um person you're sending it to, it runs from. I don't know, say half eleven till two o'clock, and that they're not to pack up and leave before two o'clock. So you may, but then you're going to come into probably where you've got tables there that have got nothing on their table because they've sold out.
Well, I think, I think we, I mean, it's early enough in the year that we can, we can bring this back to the future committee. Allow all of us to go and have discussion and bring back recommendations to the future committee to do that appropriate.
Yeah.
In terms of the recommendations on the thoughts.
Oh, we have to agree them in lock.
Yeah.
Right.
Have you got this?
Thank you. That is, I want that, please. That's the end of this. Sorry, I'll keep making you. But the exercise is good for all of us. Um right, in which case, we, yeah, we didn't do. Um all across the memorial day, and perhaps Madam there might want to say something about that. Um I know we agreed on, but it was a big day and we did, you think it went well? No, it was exactly, Andy.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam there, it was just.
It went very well.
It did.
Yeah, it was uh it was a good dignified occasion, the inclusion of the uh. You know, the students from the secondary school and the children from the primary school was a very good one. I think that really. Lent it more, more relevance, and I think they appreciated being there, so I'm really pleased that they were able to come. I think we've got a comment from one of the schools that they'd love to come back next year. And also, uh you know, Sarah Katz from the Nuthy and Synovo Community. Also came, she appreciated being asked and um said she would be happy to come back. So it's, and it was, I think. As well attended as last year, possibly slightly more of the uh of the children. So, yeah.
I I did ask to have the, is not everyone going to attend every event? And I thought what the children read out were so appropriate and so poignant. I asked it to be included in the agenda, and members happy for that to be included in the minutes.
Yes.
Um because I think that when children um make such an effort and do such a thing on an event like that. It 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 can't be said enough how important that is. Because standing up in front of people isn't easy at all, but it's quite emotive, engaging.
Yep.
Do that. I propose that we do that, and so we second that, we do that in a minute.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's um Madam there. Um and um. Well, we sort of did, didn't we?
Yeah.
Madam there around it, we all just followed it. From my point of view, I, I thought it went very well and um. And see, that's our second year now.
Yeah.
Um doing this event and um and it was nice that this year Ruth attended it. She couldn't lie here through work commitments, as Councilor New originally was the person who proposed that we did this event. Lovely that she was able to be there, and we also had um one or two people attending who were. Um disabled as well. They managed to get to the event, which was good. Um so um. Work in progress, but this is early stages and um but no, that's good. Um thank you very much for all those involved in it. But basically, um that you know, I thought read out was very, what you read out was really very good.
I I didn't write it, I mean, very good.
I thought if you wrote it, it was really very good. So you're admitting you didn't write it. So you're admitting you didn't write it, they're glad to be in there then. Uh, thank you, thank you. Um, let's try to move on to the next item on the agenda, um, access. You're seeing in the report, there is a response. So you know where the ongoing concern and I'm going to say that we bring it back. I'd like to read it, transport, but I believe we have an additional response to that, which is probably less than relevant actually, um, to it.
So the, um, local area technician, um, that had been doing this last year and had held a meeting with, uh, Buckinghamshire Council members and that's it, um, actually left last year. The, they now have a new member of staffs now been appointed, they start on the first of March. So, I mean, from my point of view, hopefully we're still in position as well, getting some updates on that. I don't think it's very likely we'll have an update before then.
Okay, well, from my point of view, I am a Buckinghamshire councillor, I was never invited to any briefing. I've lived in Buckingham West, actually shops in the town or uses the town. And, um, and people in Buckingham East, in town centre apparently, they were not included in any briefings about the town centre. Um, what I will say is that I remain completely concerned, I have thought um about this issue. I have known two people who have brought their arms stuck in the town centre. I can provide with permission photographic evidence of those things. One of the problems we've got with the town centre is the unlevel nature of it and the fact that we have an elderly population who, who not navigate unlevel services. And, and we don't wish to do that. It's all very well, in my personal thing for Buckinghamshire council, to say we're working on it. But it's not been like this overnight, it's been, it's been working for many years to get into this deteriorated state. Also from a committee point of view, the area that we house the market in, in the town centre, the cobbled area there, if, if I was to say that it was less than cobbled and less than secure um and unlevel, um, is, is obvious. I don't think we can just await till three councillors zoom, um, to discuss this because this isn't there. They were all members of this council, they've all had a chance to read the agendas of this council, they've all had the minutes of this committee. They know that it's going on and not one of them's come to report anything positive. And the fact that there's a local area technician coming in in March doesn't mean that he's going to be able to resolve all this overnight. And also there's a new contract coming in for Buckinghamshire council. So I don't think we've actually progressed any, I don't, if I'm on my own on this, please tell me I am on my own. Um, but I think we do need to, um, be a little bit vocal about this in the sense that our aspiration is better. Um, we do think that as a, a, a market town in Buckinghamshire, the services aren't adequate enough to cope with the population and along the lines that we want to improve, if I'm on my own on that, pushback on me, at least, and then I work my way down.
Thank you, um, you're certainly on your own, it's been something that this committee has discussed, um, for a long time. Um, and it's not all, it's not just elderly residents that are of concern because I mentioned my colleague who works in the, um, in Hamilton House, who has to push somebody in a wheelchair, an elderly person. And she had great difficulty, so that's people that are pushing wheelchairs or helping those that are unable to walk. They are also having issues. Um, and when we did our, um, access awareness day, we all, you know, found out how difficult it was. This has been going on for a very long time. Um, it, it's kind of concerning that they think that this is going to take place before April of this year. Um, because of the workers involved, but if that's going to happen, fantastic.
Oh, no.
Twenty twenty.
Oh, God.
Ryan.
Well, it's good to see them finally respond about this. But, um, there's also wider places in the town, um, from Weston Abbey, for instance. The massive hill going down, uh, which quite an elderly population live on cotton close.
Yeah.
And they have to walk down that hill and that hill has been cracked for years. Um, and it's completely unsafe. Um, in the winter, it's absolutely hell to get down. Um, and it, it, well, granted, yeah, this is a start, but they should be broadening out to encompass the routes into the town as well. It seems like they're, you know, have a, have a very thin plaster solution to this.
Okay, thank you, um. Any thoughts on this side, um, about you?
I was pondering about, um, the community centre, actually. I was, um, thinking that wasn't great there for people in wheelchairs at the panto. The, um, evening where the, it's like the, the last full dress rehearsal where, um, invited people um are, are taken, there were quite a lot of people from, um, Farringdon House and quite a number in wheelchairs. And some of them had to, they left early and they really struggled with getting out of those double doors. If I haven't gone and held the door open for them.
Yeah.
Um, a lady pushing a wheelchair.
Did that something, that's.
So that I've, I've gone.
Swatting the door, yeah.
Yeah.
Use my walking stick.
And we need to like out to the middle of the.
What are the double doors to the back?
The, the main door, main door, I choose my stick.
They've got a hook there, haven't they? Hooked their door.
Well, the door, the doors were actually already closed, I suppose she could have abandoned her. Rand is on the management committee, you can always feed that back to them.
I think that's something with Madame May.
Yeah, just a bit of a tension here regarding the going back to the market area, the main town centre area. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think special paving, paving has been used, hasn't it? The idea being it was, um, looks nice and, um, maybe a bit makes it emphasises the historical nature of the town centre.
Hmm.
And that's all well and good, but when those paving slabs get cracked, they're, A, they're more expensive to repair and more difficult to repair. And there's a tension there between having something that looks nice, but mainly the maintenance of it and the accessibility of it is not very good compared to a more level and smooth surface, which looks like nothing on earth. So I don't know where you go with that, I'm not making a suggestion either way.
My, I'm, I'm actually personally disappointed that I keep walking by, um, the jewellery shop in the Meadow Walk and the girl would knock on the window and give me an update report of who's lately tripped over outside their shop. Um, and then asked me, when is anyone going to do anything about it, Robbie? And, and I've reported, I think it's my treats, I've done all the normal, um, rudimentary, um, proposals with it. I think we are on the point where we have to say that the very least we should ask is a full action report of, um, of where they're going to do this, some dates and times about what they're going to do. Because, um, we run lots of events in the market and we also run a market. And the fact that they chose to talk to only half of Buckinghamshire councillors about the town centre when half of them don't actually, there's no My Constituent shop in Buckingham, they all go to, you know, King's of course. Um, um, which is ridiculous. And none of them have come back to report to us, so I get the feeling there isn't any good news to come on this and we're being fobbed off. So I, I would propose that we either depressively explain the fact that we're grateful for the offer, we just, um, um, that we, we recognise the problems, that we do need some substantial movement on improving the town centre for everybody's wellbeing. And, and, and not be too, be quite accurate about it, I mean, but I can provide all photographs of where the area is and they're out of date now.
We can go back to the access awareness.
We can go back to the access awareness, where there's a report of many of these things, having to be raised at the access awareness day.
Yeah.
Um, Ryan.
Oh, I mean, um, another thing is, um, I raised a few issues, potholes and things, you know, just outside of the town. And some of the, um, fix my streets responses that I got was, we've carried out a survey of the area. Um, we find that there's no problem with this and also that, um, you know, um, es- essentially there's no, no further action needed. And, um, you know, there quite clearly is, I, I get a lot of residents rounds, round my house. Um, so, well, not actually in my house, but around my street.
Yeah.
And they're all coming to your door, actually, yeah. But they, um, they said, oh, well, we, we logged this about a week ago. And they've said, no, there's no further action needed. Um, so it seems to be quite, it seems to be quite an interesting sort of turn of events where they're then there two days later repairing the same bit of road that was, you know, that, that was reported. It just seems a bit, it seems a bit absolute madness.
Well, my, 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 I'm going to suggest a way forward and people tell me if they think I'm wrong. We need a two-prong approach on this. When is at this point in time, we, we, we ask for, for where the works are going to be done and times and dates that we anticipate doing the work and what areas we anticipate doing. But they've alluded to they're going to do some works. But we've got no information to know when that's going to be done.
Reports.
Or when it's going to take place. But if you were to audit this from a safety point of view, you would say, which areas are you going to do? And they haven't got that in there. And secondly, um, but they've had a conversation clearly around this, but there's been nothing come back where we've had, since we started discussing it, we've had at least a dozen, half a dozen council meetings, of which a lot of members could have reported to us from Buckingham East on what was going on and that is all this work's going to take place and that, and that hasn't happened. I mean, that's a public record. So my feeling is we're being fobbed off. Secondly to that, I still think that we need to express our concerns about the fabric of the town centre. The fact that it is, um, failing its, its needs to the, as Lisa said, people in wheelchairs and elderly people. And, and, and we are writing to them to ask the, the first point. Would that be a reasonable, um, report? If, if people aren't with me on that, I'm happy to.
Could I just clarify, you're suggesting we're frank?
No, I'm suggesting that we write in the first listen, uh, 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 in the first listen, we will be writing to ask for um, information about.
Who, who did you want us to write to?
Well, we're writing to transport Buckinghamshire, which should only be out of date by the thirty third of March anyway.
Okay.
So, um, and they're not going to be existed by the thirty third of March. So, um, we write to Buckinghamshire council, who are their contracting, and ask for a body of works. Um, of when they're planning to do the works, dates and times, and what works are anticipated being done. Then we could start to see that we know that they're going to do this area. And we know money is short, so that shows that that area is being done. And then we can start working on the other areas to try and get the town centre, um, back to where I put. But I do share, I understand exactly where Madame May comes from about the unposters, but we didn't choose to put that service in. Um, it was chosen to be put in. If we're going to change that service to tarmac, which is the cheaper way to, um, do it without slabs. Because what they basically do is come along, put tarmac in the hole, they walk away.
Hmm.
And now, and what we aren't doing is setting it up like a chessboard so we can go down there and have a game of chess. But it, but it's not starting to look that way. So my view is we write them after these poignant questions. But secondly, we do aggressively say that we are writing to them to ask them when they're going to be undertaking these works based upon their response to the committee, because we are personally concerned about how many people are having difficulty getting around the town centre and, and tripping over it and the inability to report it, which Ryan has expressed.
Hmm.
Um, and how the reporting isn't as precise and accurate and, and responses. Do people feel that wrong? Because in the end.
We're all getting told things, aren't we, that people are having difficulties in the town, it's just not.
Are we happy with that approach? If it is the wrong approach, um, please tell me to back off and we'll go a different way.
A second.
Yeah, um, so.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so which case we'll do it like that. And then if it's an issue which becomes uncorrupt, we'll then bring it back to full council.
Hopefully we'll have some dates, won't we?
Madame May.
We need to vote.
We do need to vote.
Yes, all right, we do, Madame May, thank you.
Yeah, that's it, thank you very much.
And if it's so, we'll take it to full council, we'll wait a day. Yeah, okay, well done, Madame May, make it as better again. Right, okay, next item is PSOP update. And can you give them that? Because I'm, I'm, I'm sure what that means.
Yes, apologies if it's a little bit silly. Public Spaces Protection Order.
Yes.
To be clear on what it is, um, that is the final about Buckingham, about drinking and having open hours.
No, no, no.
Public spaces. So everyone knows we've been following this up for a while.
Hmm.
Um, there was a consultation in the summer, um, that was due to finish in October. I can't give you a firm update as I was hoping to because it seems that what we have discovered is that at Buckinghamshire council, the officer who was working on this has since left and there is some confusion. So.
There is confusion.
So, so once we've got a firm update, we'll come back to you with what that is. Um, but yes, essentially, the last that we heard to go with, um, there was still a few things that I know.
They were still?
Still a few things that I know.
Well, I think there are.
That's it.
From the memory of members who discussed this. Remember when we originally were made aware that they'd changed the notice? And it wasn't the same order as what we've got in Buckingham? Then that was back in the previous town class period. And then it crossed over into the present town class period about making sure that we were involved in the consultation. Now, there's a huge difference between the order in Aylesbury and the order in Buckingham, because our order says that doesn't ban you from drinking and which means that they can ask you to detest and drink when you're causing an issue. The order in Aylesbury, in the town central area, is banning people from drinking. If they've, if they haven't taken on our views at the consultation, which was, we wish to keep the other order.
Yeah.
And they, with the change of officer and reintroduced it, we have a problem used to because at the next event, half of Buckingham's going to get criminalised. Um, and I don't think they're bound enough police officers in Tens Valley to deal with it, quite frankly. Um, but so, um, we'll bring it back to the April meeting and make a comment on it. But are we happy to allow the officers to clear the pitch on our behalf if what the information they get isn't um, in order with where we think we are? Are we happy with that?
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Thank you, um. Which moves us on to, um, climate emergency action plan, um, which we are going to have to sometimes take a bit more, the long-term discussion on that in the sense that we also at the end of the agenda one agenda, we perhaps ought to change it round to make talking stuff in a bit more detail. What are the actions in there, I think, I think that we're undertaking, I think we're doing. Has anyone got anything on there that they think we need to, um, do additional or change, or are we sort of minded that we ought to, that there's one meeting, bring it forward on the agenda to give it a bit more of a discussion? Um, and yet.
So I think the report as it is doesn't require, in my view, there isn't anything that I, you wish to discuss. The idea of bringing this forward on the agenda in one meeting and devoting a substantial agenda item to these actions and whether there are any others that we might wish to introduce as a good one.
Yeah, you happy with that?
Yes, yes, we just have a proposal, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, I think on one of the events that we reviewed tonight, there was, um, um, climate impact assessment, or what's that effect? Are we doing that on each event now?
So we only do it, if you see it, it's on item ten on the action list. There's an environmental impact assessment for town councilled events with over two hundred and fifty participants or attendees as part of the existing events management plan, so we then report back to you on that. We don't do it for events which are not run by us. We do still look at it as part of our arrangements with them, but we don't do an impact assessment the same way. Do any impact assessments the same way.
Because I have seen comments on Facebook about some of the things we do.
Yeah, but I know we've made them and, um.
But, um, and I think we have got, i- if there is anything we can, we. If we can tighten up on that a bit, then I think it would be beneficial to do that.
But while I was hoping posed and anything we need to forward, but I do think that not better in the next meeting, but the future meeting, we do need to bring forward.
Thanks, yeah.
Around that. Um, Ryan.
Well, so.
You said, you know, are we happy to do that?
Yeah.
And I, and both know the report and agree that we'll do that. But I think you do want to discuss that and you've got time to discuss it at the end, you know.
That's fine. Yeah, no problem.
Then perhaps we can make other committees do, didn't that?
Can't make other committees.
Well, we can, we're always. We, we can encourage, we can encourage them to do that.
I suppose the chair that those meetings can take the suggestion or.
It's, it's, okay, um, okay, thank you, uh, yes, right, that's good. We've done news releases, um, within, as we've gone, I don't think I did them. Chairman item for information, um. We'll be discussing Banjan later in the year. I am abiding, that weekend, it might get visited by, um. Uh, we're gonna be a central stop for a motorbike rally in Buckingham.
Oh, that can we can.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, which. Um, that was like, I am, I, I.
It's just like.
Well, I think this is where you're wrong with that, like, you've just spent five thousand, a thousand pounds on a bike. You, 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 you've pretty much got a decent job if that can be your second vehicle.
Hmm.
Um, you're not, um, whatever, so we may get visited here. We'll bring it back to a future meeting when we've got some more information. But the profit of it is, if there's another fifty to a hundred people in the town. They're going to be shopping and eating in the town and give boost in our economy.
Hmm.
And it might mean that we have to discuss, once we get some information at a later day about, um, having them. You know, somewhere to park and somewhere to do that, make sure that it, 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 it runs not actually having anything to do with them. But we may suggest areas where we wish them to park. Are you happy that once I get that established? And information, um, um, that we'll bring it back. Um, I'm just notifying you that it will happen so that when it's sprung on, you're not worried about it. Um, they'll come anyway.
Definitely, that pleasure to park.
And, and they always like to, and I, I was gonna learn walking along though, I have promised I won't get on one. Not as a driver anyway. Um, but, but, um, but they, they, they'll come hopefully and it'll be boosted to town because. Anyone, um, the clerk was sort of saying what it's like in Brackley when they have them there. It's, um, it's quite a feature, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, all the way down the street.
All the way down the street, and, and it brings lots of trade to the town. We need to boost our economy.
Well, you said that.
Yeah, Sturgis.
I'll be to Sturgis.
Yeah, you know, and I can go now and read Kindle my, my, my late wife used to have a, a massive motorbike. Many years ago, she had a Honda four hundred four, um, and then, and, um. She always said that the great thing about being a, 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 a girl or a lady when you drop the bike. He said, men without thinking back up, could, she could never lift it back off the floor, it was that heavy, because those old bikes are really heavy, not like the new ones. Um, and, um, I think she'd probably quite enjoy the fact that they was coming to Buckingham. And the chap told me an artist who paints the motorbike tanks, um.
Well, where I used to live in America, I was half an hour drive from Sturgis. Um, and I've been there in South Dakota and they have the big Harley Davidson rally every year. And you can get up to three hundred and sixty thousand bikes for the, the week. You know what it's like, don't you? So, but a lot of the, um, like the Hells Angels and that, that would come, they do a lot of charity work. And a lot of them are like doctors and lawyers and they'll ship their bikes from the UK or Europe.
That's true.
Over Australia, yeah, just for the event, so.
Right, I mean, I, I don't know nothing about the organisation, the clubs which are coming, but I know they're gonna call through Buckingham. Their anticipation is to call through that weekend. I'm anticipating it would be with Sunday.
Yeah.
In which case that'll boost the trade in the town and our shops and restaurants, probably with money actually. Um, uh, decision to wait, but once we get some more information, I'll work with officers to make sure that you're aware of it. It's just that, um, we all have our own selection of people we talk to and, um, and mine are different to others. But, um, thank you very much. And with that, I thank the members of the committee for all their corrections. Bringing me up to date, questioning when I was on the right bike or the wrong bike, it's very much appreciated. And adding to the G R U, the event, and, uh, and I thank the officers for their time, diligence and patience tonight. And I, I look forward to seeing you at our next meeting, which will be on the third of April. And as I said, do be assured you've got this evening to go out and buy your flowers or your card Valentine's Day. And, and don't, um, and don't, um, miss the opportunity, because I think it's more important, I think.
Hmm.
It's all nationalised now.